Alright, so I think there was a little bit of confusion as to why we were talking about... Okay, this is the... It's not that... Yeah, it's a work session and we are talking to... Mostly about the pool, but it is a work session, so we can always talk about other things at the end of this. If there's pressing things or anything like that. But when we had talked the last time in a work session, we had started talking about the pool and the 6 million and what does it... What do we really want? What do we really need as council? Jason has taken the lead on having the pool subcommittee. So they worked with MKSK for months, coming in with building designs and you know, all of this kind of stuff. Obviously, the price tag was not completely unexpected, I don't think, but still... I don't want to use the word unattainable, but you know, it's not just something we can write a check for. It's either gonna have to go to the ballot, it's gonna have to... We're gonna have to figure out grants of some sort. Some creative way of getting something like this if we try to continue to move forward in that direction. But then there were some other questions from some of the other councils. Well, why can't we just fix it? Why can't we... Or let's do phases, or whatever. So at some point, we have to bring this to council and this is kind of the way that we did the buildings and things like that. Because ultimately, you guys are gonna be the ones to decide. So, and don't take this wrong, but the pool subcommittee can put in months and months and months and months, but at the end of the day, if you say no, then you guys say no. Or you guys... So this is kind of one of those... I don't want to say halfway points, but we have a lot of information right now as to great designs, great options. Are... There was, there was one comment that basically said that they didn't want this to turn into something completely bougie or whatever, having too many people at the pool. We still want it to be a community pool. If we do all of this, is it gonna turn into something else? So this is kind of your guys' time to really express like, what do you think that the pool should look like? What do you think... How do you think we could get this financed? I mean, I know you guys have heard quite a bit from Jeff. Do you think it would pass at the ballot? I know that it's... That's an open-ended question. I mean, just because you think it is, doesn't mean it's going to. And I don't mean it yes or no. Just because you think no, it doesn't mean it's gonna be no, or whatever. You get my point.
I'm just remembering, I don't think it would pass.
Yeah. Well, and I think, you know, I think this Westerville School thing is really gonna open up our eyes to what people are willing to do and not willing to do with the ballot when it comes to property taxes and things like that. I'm assuming you guys have all seen that. So, again, it's one of those things that this is kind of like... We couldn't use that whole work session to talk about the pool. And I think it's really a... You know, this is potentially going to be the largest project if we did something in a $6 million tune. We know that we can knock that 6 million down pretty easy. We know that the parking lot is something... Now, I'm going off the topic, but the parking lot's gonna have to be done. Is that really the pool? Yeah, you could call it what you want, but it's not really. Because we've talked about painting that for many years. But I think now is kind of the time in which we kind of go over what, what does the pool look like for you? What do you think the residents would... What are you okay with doing as individuals? And then, I don't know, you... Jason, you can take it over. I just kind of wanted to give you why we're here, because I think a lot of people didn't realize why we were coming in to talk about it. Basically, we're talking about it because it was way too much information to put in a work session for in one hour. That we're supposed to be talking about everything. So this is kind of like your one hour to talk about just the pool and everybody just to give kind of their thoughts as to where do we go from here? Because at the end of the day, this pool... I worked with Patterson when we got the new, the baby pool put in. And at that point in time, Patterson said, "We probably have about five years left in this pool."
Okay.
That's between the sides and the bottoms, and we've since had the bottoms crack. We have since replaced filters, which were in the tune of $7,500 each, plus, plus, plus. If we continue to paint it every year, it's a couple thousand dollars. So it's, it's one of those things that at some point, this five years, maybe we can extend it seven or eight, but this five years is almost up. So, we already know we can't do it this year. We already know we're probably pushing it for next year. So this is, how many more years can we push it without, with just Band-Aids? I don't know. So that's kind of where we are. And at this point, what do we do if the pool literally caves in in two years? Like, we have to have some sort of plan, and if we can't do a $6 million pool, what can we do? And how many of you want to go? As elaborate as what we're talking about. And I don't even mean that they're elaborate, but they're new. So, Jason, I'm not... Give it to you now, but I just, again, I just kind of wanted everybody to know why we're here.
Yep. Okay. So, I mean, the subcommittee talked through a lot of stuff. Obviously, we knew and we explained to MKSK kind of our budget and what we were looking at. And ultimately, if you saw the original presentation, they went through all the pools that they've done and kind of what it cost then and what, based on current rates, what that same pool would have cost. I think the lowest one on that presentation was $4 million when it was built. And I think that was for Columbus. And, and I think it was closer to six or seven now. As far as what the going rates were for everything. We kind of brainstormed. We went into MKSK with the, here's our wish list of everything that we could possibly want in here, just to kind of see what would come back, right? So, some of the things on the wish list were slides. Not just the, not just like the standard blue slide that we used to have at the pool or that a lot of pools had back in the day, but you know, the big tower kind of slides. We talked about a splash pad. We talked about...
Let me see if I have any diagrams.
Okay. We talked about a zero entry... A zero entry pool because of our guests that have handicap needs. You know, they can't necessarily climb down steps or they can't use the ladders. We talked about our swim teams that have been using the pool and what they've requested and suggested. We talked about concession stand, we talked about event space. We talked about restrooms with showers and ADA compliant and all that type of stuff. So we kind of gave them a pretty big list of stuff. They came back to us with that first design. I think it was close to 7.2, 7.4 million dollars. And we said, "Hey, okay, that's great, but this is way over what we know we have as a village." 2 million is really kind of what we're aiming for. What can we do? Maybe can we do this in phases? And then, they came back to us with a whole new set of stuff where it's not two separate pools. It's one giant pool, which saves some money. They removed the splash pad, a whole bunch of other stuff, and they got it down to that 6.2-ish. I think we got in the last estimate. So that's kind of some of the thoughts. One of the things we also talked about was that we have a facility that's used for 110 days, basically a year, out of 12 months. And so can we get, can we generate more revenue out of that space? You know, one of the things they came back to us with is that if they did small changes to the parking lot, not really, more extended, a little more towards like where the painter's house would be, if you know where their house is, kind of the, the far end of the pool. If we extended just a little bit, we can get 81 parking spaces in there with paved line spaces. And so that kind of, that, one of our thoughts was can we build a facility here that we can use year-round that potentially could even hold more people? The other thought is that we can't have liquor in this building. And it would be nice if people wanted to hold events. You know, let's say there's a wedding and someone wants to do the reception there, right? They probably want alcohol out of it. So we kind of took all those factors into play and that's kind of where we came up with stuff. Especially the event space portion of it. It was a combined, combined concession stand slash event space. Simple on the event space and that, it's concrete floors. It's really kind of unfinished because of the needs that we've heard from using this space. Oh, we can't have red juice in here. We can't, you can't do painting parties in here because we can't get paint on the floor. So we kind of took in some of those recommendations. And also, you know, how many people can we realistically get in this space? And how many people could we realistically get at that space? I think the other thought that we've talked about is if we were to come up with a Dora at some point, what would those limitations be? And some of the thoughts have been from the community building to the pool area, because that's where our parking is and that could be a nice little walking distance. But again, kind of, what can we, can we do anything that would help generate extra income at that space? So we talked through, maybe in the spring or, or fall, having a farmer's market down there. You know, we talked about food trucks being down there. So there is space for food trucks and whatnot. So if we did like, like a food truck day, where there's a bunch of them, that's down there. We really kind of talked through a whole bunch of stuff and that's kind of what we came up with. There's still some things in there that are kind of wish list things. But they kind of removed a lot of it. And we've done small things over the years, like we've been replacing the pool chairs at the pool, right? So we have 178 lounge chairs at the pool. We have 40 new, or maybe 44 new chairs for the tables out there. So those are all expenses that go into a new pool that we don't have to pay for because we already have. I think the other thing is, there's some things that you could plan for and not install. So, for example, security system. We probably need a security system at the pool, some cameras of some kind. Especially because we handle cash down there. It'd be nice to have cameras on the registers. We're not talking about streaming the pool and people in their bathing suits and whatnot, but just some security type stuff. But you could wire that up and then, you know, install it later on down the road. Some other things that came to light very recently. One of the, so Northland Pool, it does not sound like Northland Pool's gonna make it another season. They're really operating in a deficit at this point. And so we could potentially see an influx of people from that. I also heard this past weekend at the band night, the second Friday at the, at the pool, Worthington Pools might close theirs as well. This might be their last season for their pool. If they can't get the, if the ballot, if they're gonna put it on the ballot this fall and if it doesn't pass, they're saying that this is the last season for their pool. And they're looking for between 10 and 15 million dollars to do theirs. It depends how many of the three pools they're gonna fix up. And that came from someone who used to serve on the board of Worthington Pools. You know, we, we have heard from guests at the pool that they like how... You can see everyone, you know, you're, unlike Highland Pools, right? There's hidden spots, or if you're in one particular area, you may not be able to see your family on the other side of it, just because of the layout of that pool. We've heard about how a lot of times Highland's is at capacity and you just can't get into it, right? So they're probably our closest competition. And we do model some of our pricing off of theirs, but... Yeah. Trying to think what else here. Anything else that you can think of?
I wonder if it would be beneficial to maybe go around and really feel out where everyone is with, you know, what they, you know, would be willing to, you know, what they prefer, what they can sign, you know, finance-wise or staging-wise or things like that.
I mean, we can certainly do that.
I have a question, Robert.
Yeah.
I can find it before I can't find it now, but somewhere on the website are the plans? And are those the most recent plans?
There is a more recent set of plans that I did receive the other day, not too long ago. Let me see if I have that. Actually... I have a printout of it. That might be faster. So this is the, this is the latest...
I just have an extra copy too.
Is that the same one?
No, I have everything. The whole pool replacement, that's the plan.
Do you have the last one they sent us? Because that has kind of a summary of everything in it.
I have the one from June. Let me see which one you have.
That's probably it. That's...
Yes. Yours just is double-sided. This is the same one.
Okay.
And I didn't do color to save money.
That's fine.
It's on record.
That's fine.
Thanks, Mayor.
You're so welcome.
Did you print a few of them out or just...
No, I didn't know.
No, we're sharing.
Do you want me to forward it to everybody? Because they are on laptops too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have it, it's holding up right now. I might need to, it's 40 some pages.
Yeah. It's hard for me to find it in a...
Oh, I already have it. It's pulled up.
Yeah, I'll look. So yes, everything's in here. This, if you look at this, you'll see that this includes all the plans from their fir-, from the very first meeting that we had all the way till the end. So you'll kind of see all the steps along the way. Of where we went. April, did you have anything to add to...
I actually want to hear whatever he says before I say anything.
Okay.
Somebody who talks less than I do, because I have a lot to say.
Who gets one?
I think we need to temper all of this stuff. Like, I don't think we need to... The thing that I've been running into day in and day out every time is all of these are great ideas, but it is impossible to find anybody to work. So the fact that we're bringing on more stuff that we need to run, I think is our biggest problem and I want to stay away from that. And I'm very worried about that because we can pour all this money into it and then turn it into something that we can't handle because we can't find people to work that. And the amount of other maintenance stuff that we take on is my biggest concern when it comes to, oh, maintaining a pavilion, renting it, doing all this stuff. We have one full-time employee. So all of these things in theory are great and competition and all of that stuff. But until I hear a really good concrete plan of how we're going to staff that, I am very cautious about moving forward with all of this.
What staffing do you think, what extra staffing are you thinking?
If we have a bigger pool.
It's, it's not...
If we have a venue. If we have a thing where we need to organize a farmer's market and all of this stuff. How much more can we take on from a labor perspective? So, yeah, I would love all that stuff. Don't get me wrong. But like, who's gonna run this?
Yes. I have some ideas around that.
I think we could hire people who usually do that.
Can you? Because I can't. I could barely hire anybody.
As far as the extra stuff, you know, that, that is, I think you... I think you have to build for the future a little bit. Even if we can't put it all into place at first, I don't think it's gonna take a ton of extra labor to run this pool.
But how do you know?
The software we have will handle the rental space. Just like it does the after-hours rentals, we can just add an addition of the event space type of thing and it'll all get handled through there. And then I think we could pass legislation that would support the fees that would be involved with it. You know, making sure it's open up. I think we can do something simple too, as, like, unlike this building where we have a pods that you have to open it, you could put a lock on it. Like you'd put on your house that's connected to Wi-Fi and you change the PIN number remotely. And then say, "Hey, here's the access code to the door." It will change, you know, after you guys leave for the night, kind of thing.
Yeah. I guess my vision for this is still a neighborhood pool and not a neighborhood pool slash events venue, because the thing is, is we're not a big community. And yes, planning for the future, but like, our community, we're out of space. I don't think we're gonna have a lot more people. But we're gonna ask those people to pay for all this other stuff. So I don't know if I feel confident about that. Just because I want to make it nice for the people that live here. And I don't want to make it so nice that other people are going to enjoy it at the cost of the people that live here. Do you see what I'm saying?
I do.
So I think we need to find that fine balance. And talk about that. Because I want to know how everybody else here feels about that. If everybody else is like, "Nah, I want to make it as nice as possible." Okay, fine, then I'll stop talking. But if everybody else is like, "You know, I have the same concerns." Let's talk it out and find some sort of compromise.
My concern is, is the getting the money. I mean, I think, if we... What do I believe? I think if you put it on the ballot, it's gonna go down.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Because, and again, I think Westerville, like, if Westerville Schools, if our, all of our property taxes get ready to go up again, because it does get... I'm not saying I'm a yes or a no for Westerville School, whatever. But they go up again and then can you imagine it going up another $600? For, you know, 600 for this, 600 for that. I don't know what the actual number is. But at some point, our retired are never gonna be able to afford the property taxes.
Right.
So yeah, they get homestead, but I can't afford that much. I mean, I can't afford another 1,200, can I? Maybe, if you guys raise the police salary again, so.
It's the only way we...
I'm making light of it, but...
How much should dogs make?
I think for a lot of residents, you could potentially be pushing them out that are on fixed incomes. So, and we do see that. We do get people that come in and, you know, that will ask questions and this and that. And, and again, I, I, I'm not going to say that it will fail. What is my heart of hearts? I will have a hard time pushing yes for another 600 or 900 on my own property taxes. And I go to the pool every single, okay, maybe more than I should. And I want it to be nice. I, I, I think that people would use the event center. I think that they would, and, but I will also say, I think that that's gonna entail another... I don't think you're gonna be able to get away with another seasonal person. I think you're going to be... I think this person would stay busy. I think that at some point, they would be doing a lot more of like, putting together... Maybe the food trucks go to them and maybe, you know, other things like that go to them. I feel like you could keep... I think, in fairness, I think we could keep that person busy now. It would take a lot off of Barb's, you know, that, that's something that we have actually been talking about in here and maybe even bringing it to you guys. But, you know, the rental of this has become, I don't want to say a headache, but a headache. And the picking up in the keys and the dropping off of the key. Yeah, I've already explained that to you guys many times. And if you add another event center, so far, we've not had any problems, questions, or concerns, to my knowledge, about the shelter. It's, I know, you know, some people may want more rules to it. I've not seen a problem yet, and if there is, I think we need to jump on it immediately. But I've not seen that. I just feel like with the concession stand, we cannot keep having Jason, like, every three minutes, somebody asking him a question and all that kind of stuff. And, and he is phenomenal at the concession stand. But at some point, and we thought we were getting, well, it's not gonna be... We have to get somebody to order the stuff. We have to get somebody else to pick up the stuff. We have to get somebody that is doing all of that. And right now, it's Jason. So we've started trying to do some of this, but right now, and we can't, again, we can't keep doing that. And it's not legally or this or that, but it's not fair to him that the villages, you know, he's volunteering for all these different things. Putting together the bands and doing... There's so much stuff that is wonderful for the residents. We need somebody to take that stuff over and do that kind of stuff. Like, again, I do the contracts and I do all of that, but I don't schedule them. Barb does so much scheduling with that stuff, not the bands, but the movie night. I mean, all of that stuff, somebody is already doing that in the background. Most of it's Jason, and whatever's not Jason is myself, Leah, or Barb. So, there could easily already be a person. So I don't want to say that that's a negative on the pool, because I already feel like we're there.
If we're, if you want to talk about that right now, I think, I think we could have a person who runs the event, does all that type of stuff as well, including like food trucks and, and farmer's markets type things. And they would have to run the pool during the summer though, too. Like, that would be their primary job as well.
I agree with that. They would have to be...
Which we only pay someone to do. So that would be a little change there. But the, and we talked, we've talked about even like an untapped Minerva Park, like Westerville does untapped Westerville, where you have that beer event. At $25 a person, 1,000 people, that one night that I was there a couple years ago, I said, "They just made $25,000 and they probably got all the beer for free." And they still charge money for tickets for beer on top of that. You know, those are the type of things where that person's salary is based on those events being successful. And if they're not successful, they're not the right person for the job and we find someone else that can do it. I guarantee you, there's someone out there that would love to do something like that. Like as an event person.
Okay, but you still have to hire that person.
Sure. And we've still gotta pay, you know...
And you still have to pay somebody to even find that person. So even the labor of finding somebody to work that...
Guess who gets to do that?
Yeah.
You.
Which is what I'm saying. That I don't mind. I absolutely, I mean...
I think that's actually the least of your worries.
That is.
Especially stay-at-home parents that are looking for something.
Yeah, April said something to it.
April's gonna do it.
But, go ahead.
But I think it'll be easy. I think that's the least of the concerns.
Yeah, I do too.
Well, I think the financial part of hiring someone, it, they would have to be a part-time person, obviously, because once you start hitting in that full-time, I mean, you've got the insurances and all that kind of stuff. Whatever, we don't need to get involved with weeds on that. But I think the hard part that I have when you start talking about some of those and hiring another person, you know, we've already talked about hiring a maintenance supervisor, which we've, we've since... I'm just gonna be blunt. I didn't want, I'm not there to do it yet because I just feel like that's 65. I'd rather do it myself. And I'm not the maintenance supervisor, but I would rather just continue to do the contracts and things like that because I don't, I think that that's money not well... The team that we have is doing a good job, doing the things that they're doing. I would rather still do the contracts. I felt like we don't have enough work to keep that person busy year-round, okay? Then we've talked about, you know, getting somebody in here, or, you know, some sort of intern or something, again, to help take some of the load off in there, because we've moved in here. We still have boxes everywhere because we all have full, you know, we all have full-time jobs on part-time money. So there's, there's a couple other things that is gonna happen here in the next few years. I'm not speaking for anybody in this room, but I'm not doing the job for $30,000 anymore. Like, after this is done. So you guys are either gonna have to figure out somebody that's willing to do it, but it's not gonna be me. So whether or not you guys end up going city manager, that is going to be a difference in, in, you know, something that's gonna come up. So we've talked about three, four different people of new employees that we don't even... We have one full-time employee, excluding the police. We have one full-time employee in this whole building. And that's for good reason. It's because of insurance and how much money a full-time person does cost the village. So, you know, you add in extra mayor salary, a maintenance person, a maintenance... I mean, we're 150, 200 more thousand dollars a year that the village can't afford. So you can't do all of that and this and hire a person down at the pool. And employees are expensive. And you can't expect somebody to continue to volunteer for some of these things. And once you start getting into that, you could potentially, and I'm not talking about you not volunteering or anything, but you're gonna have to pay this person to do this stuff. The village used to get away with so much of volunteers and it worked for a really long time. But you're out there beck and call. I mean, if they call in sick, what are you gonna do? It falls on someone else. So, I mean, that's the concern that I have, is we've talked about numerous people with numerous jobs, bringing them in, but at some point, it falls back on, do we really want to spend $65,000 on another person to come in here?
I think we might be putting the cart for the horse in regards to pool.
Okay.
So what we're talking about, what my impression was, is where we stand on, you know, this pool, you know, restoration or improvement, what we can stomach there. We can talk about pool staff, we can talk about maintenance staff, you know, we can talk about office staff. But if we not decided what we're going to do with this pool and talking about, you know, what we envision for it, then it might be difficult for us to make the plans for how to staff it. So, that, that's my two cents. My personal thought is alongside Jason. I would like to see us build for the future, build as nice and as comprehensive of a site as we can. That being said, I mean, also of the viewpoint of Madam Mayor that if we put this up on a ballot, it will go down in flames. I have no doubt in my heart about that. Because no matter how much people love a pool, they love taxes less. So what I envision, and having sat in on a fair number of pool committee meetings, like, I suspect this would be possible, would be to stage it out. And when people see concrete results, they're much more inclined to continue supporting a program. We can't talk and say, "Oh, you know, in 10 more years, we can afford this if we, you know, set up the pool savings fund now." No, we wouldn't get the support for that. So let's say the biggest issue is the pool itself. Okay, so let's fix, you know, the metalwork, the floor, the wall, what have you, the piping. You know, put up a maker tax on the work sign. Then the next year, we find, you know, some kind of funding. And I, I know it'll be a challenge trying to come up with the funding over the years to find, you know, piece here, grant here, you know, let's say we're lucky, donation here, you know, what have you. State funding there, year after year after year. But if we peace deal this out, instead of having to pay for it all at once, which, let's be completely transparent, we can't. We do not have 4 million, 6 million dollars behind you around to do this, you know, one shot. No matter how nice that may be, no matter how much we want to. But if we can do the pool one year, if we can do, you know, maybe a slide installation, or let's say the wiring and infrastructure, or the camera for the lights for, you know, the slide. Let's say, you know, landscaping the next year. Let's say, you know, the event space. We can rent out an event space and turn that place into more money year-round, as our Jason... Into more money year-round, as our Jason was talking about. That that's where I'm at. Let's just, let's find a way to peace deal this out and keep the dream, you know, alive so that. It can be make and, you know, grow to its full. The full vision. That's that's what I see. Then we can worry about all the staff that it.
And that's something that we actually talked about in the Sunday committee was was doing it in stages. Because there's no way, no matter how, it's gonna happen on one of those. But the stages have to make sense.
Exactly.
So if you're gonna redo the pool, there are certain things like the slide, for example, that needs to be done at that first stage. So. I I I think that the, what you're saying is something that we all agree upon and that is the part of the process. I'm gonna just jump in here. But I also think, but I also think that there is very um. Interesting and outside-of-the-box ways to get funding without having to necessarily ask the community from a. For example. Let's say, and I'm making this up. But let's say uh Minerva Park Middle School really wants a swim team. But they don't have a place to practice. I know, having been on PTA for the um elementary schools for Westerville. There's so much money out there for sports.
Okay.
Maybe we can, you know, host Minerva Park Middle School Swim Club. And we can get money from the school to go towards the Olympic size, you know, whatever. An example, making it up. I don't know anything about it, but making that up. Has anyone looked at grants?
A little bit, a little, yeah.
There's still grants.
Yes.
There there is a lot of opportunity. And knowing the the demographics that are in the schools, in the in the middle school in particular, cuz that's. There's opportunity there. And so I think before we say yay or nay, I think we need to um. Put the cart before the horse and actually figure out the logistics of it. I I don't think we need to be concerned about, you know, are we gonna find somebody? How many people do we need? Yeah, I don't think that's necessary. But I think, just like anything, you you have to have the logistics sorted out. And if it's something that we can do without putting in on the ballot, without incurring more money to the community. That have a great pool and having a great event center that has a parking lot. It it seems to me like that's a great way to go. It's a selling point. It's pride for Minerva Park.
Absolutely.
And um, you know. Regardless of what other places are happening or what they're doing, the fact that Highland Park. Is the same cost or almost the same cost as our pool, looking at the difference, it's night and day though. And. If I were equidistant between the two pools.
I wouldn't because it's too busy for me. I actually would not, I did not go there, would not go. I've been there twice with my kids and hated it. Because there was never lounge chairs, couldn't find my kids, and I was done. I literally went twice because. And so that's when you said that, that was one of the things that did trigger my mind. So I went to JC. I actually didn't come to Minerva because I, my grandfather lived here for, so this is the advertisement part in me. I didn't know this pool existed. My grandfather lived two streets over. We went to JC my entire life. I did swim lessons. I don't even know if my mom knew it was there because I'm telling you what, no idea. I went to JC my entire childhood. And that's where I took my children until they were not, till they were fifteen.
And I get it cuz I've lived here sixteen years and I've only started going to the pool about five years.
Right, same.
I get it.
Yeah. But you are correct. I mean, yes, if you were equal distance, where would you go? And there are a lot of people, and the hard part is we don't tell our kids no anymore. Um, so and I'm not, I'm being a jerk when it comes to that. So when my kids would wanna go with their friends, where are we gonna go? We would go to Western, you know, I would I would suck it up and go where they wanna go. Um, because they, but I hated it. I absolutely, and it was beautiful, like I'm not bashing their pool, but. It was not comfortable for me to go there because I wanna land the sun and I wanna be able to see my kids.
So let me ask you a question. Are you, would you be comfortable if the Minerva Park Pool turned into Highland Park?
No, it would drive me nuts. It would absolutely drive me crazy. But I don't think it.
But, okay, and.
But we're not doing lazy rivers and a lot over there, so I don't think we're going that extreme.
Simple.
I don't think it would ever be had.
Yeah.
No, they have so much land.
But we have, we definitely have room for capacity, even at our current pool, without it being overwhelming.
Yeah, if if I may, the. The idea that that's coming to me is. Look, we're talking about Highland, we're talking about, you know, North River, I'm sorry, that other name escapes me. Some of these places, you know, possibly closing up shop if and if we choose not to, which I truly hope we do. Look, we're gonna be very close to the only game in town or, you know, close to it, so. I would love to see us be a big draw and, you know, have the have the infrastructure and capacity and capability. To capitalize on that. I mean. What, if if we're the last game in town, then let's have the event center, let's have, you know, the expanded pool footprint. Or at least let's get in the process of building the infrastructure there for that.
So.
I don't want an event space in the middle of a neighborhood. There's plenty of event spaces. I don't want that in the middle of a neighborhood.
Even our own neighborhood needs it. I guarantee you. I've had numerous conversations with NPCA that would much rather be doing events down at the pool than in this building.
Oh, I I would completely agree with that statement now. I mean, this is the only option that they have, but. And I think some of us are coming to that. We've seen the marks on our tables, we've seen the stains on our floors, not from you guys, but just in general. I, you know, that continues over five years. This is not gonna look like it does today. So this is not.
And we're not, this is, this is not a. A gigantic space that we're talking about. Yeah, it's simple. It's concrete floors. It's sim- honestly, what they're building for that concession stand is probably closer to what we need. Than.
They're never gonna finish that thing though.
They finally have been working. So I was thinking.
So, let let me just say, because as far as I'm concerned. What we need to do is plan for the future by having a plan. And so the most important thing to me is what needs to be done this year just to keep the pool. Running, you know, so we need to figure out, and I'm assuming using the engineering firm you've been working with. What has to be done this year just to make sure that it's going to keep working. And then. Here's what we'd like, whether it's, you know, the the whole enchilada or not. But how, but have them, I'm assuming, I'm assuming, have them phase it and say, okay. Well, the first chunk's gonna be the biggest, that's gonna be two million. So then we have a plan, and if I understood Eric Fisher properly, he's like. You give them any better when you can give them a shovel-ready plan.
Yeah, and they and they've done a lot of that for us. They have put it in phases. I think we can break it up a little more. Just knowing, and I've told you all this, hopefully you understand that. What we're being told by our engineering company is that we can't build the pool first because our. Our buildings are not ADA compliant. And we'll have to bring the buildings up to code. So that means if we start with the pool, we have to do the buildings. So I thought of a workaround, possibly.
Separate the pool from the buildings.
Well, they are separate, but.
I mean, just make it two totally different things.
I don't know that, I don't know that you can because.
You might have to have bathrooms for the pool.
But what, if we, if we start with the event space, which is supposed to have restrooms in it. It's not saying that we have to have a full set of restrooms. We don't have to have the full set of showers. Let's leave the existing building there, add this event space which gives us our concession stand as well. And we have restrooms. And we don't have to spend. Two million dollars on that building. We can probably get it done for a lot cheaper.
Here's the random, this is a random question. What? And I I'm not being a jerk. I have no idea. What, other than the fact that it's eight hundred years old, what makes. It not ADA compliant? Is it the width of like getting into? I mean, we've put random little like handicap things in there, so I know that's not sufficient, but. Is there a way just to widen those bathrooms?
Probably.
And make it two stalls instead of three? Just, you know, could we spend ten thousand dollars to make it ADA compliant to just get past that part? And I'm not advocating for it, I'm just throwing out ideas. Like, I don't know, is that the issue?
Maybe, I don't know what that would cost.
I gotta check.
Can you do an all-tender restroom and have changing areas somewhere?
Yeah, I think that, I think that you would have to go to one stall in the men's. That's just one giant and and you would take out a toilet in the women's, probably that same toilet. It it might be possible.
I don't know that that's all it would entail. So that was my question. I know that the building and and I will. It needs all new wiring, it needs all new plumbing, it needs all new everything. We do not even have hot water in the bathrooms. We do not like. Like, I know that there's more issues, but my question is, is what would that entail? What does ADA compliant? What would we have to do to that building to make it ADA compliant, to get past that part?
It's stall width, it's being able to get a wheelchair, a sink. Those type of things, light switches and so.
Cuz I think.
The faucets have to be the push, like the the paddles, I'm sure we have them all on these, right? So think about what we have here and that's what you have to do.
Which is why we ended up doing the bathrooms the way that we did it to make it easier for people to.
I wish we had multiple options to examine. For instance. A poor option, you know, where. We just may, we get, we fix the pool and keep minimal changes. I'd love a slide, sure, that's great, but like. Let's like top bare bones, like. So I I wish there was option A, I wish there was a middle-class option where we get some of the things that we want and then, you know, there's the. Hey, this is the dream list with an event space type of.
Right. So we did kinda start asking that, and I'll let Jason, I'm gonna let you finish and then let Jason kind of explain. We did kinda ask that. I'm gonna speak and say, I didn't agree with his answer. I felt like he was just kind of like, that's not what we do type thing. I didn't agree with him because I don't buy his answer, but that is just me not buying his answer. But go ahead and finish.
No, and I, cuz because I I've heard you mention, you know, revenue generator, and I think that. I don't want, I wouldn't want that to be the focus of the neighborhood. It's more like, you know, residential enjoyment, you know, not just. Generating revenue for an event.
So when I say revenue generator, I'm talking more about. It's not an expense line of the village. It's operating in the black. And not in the red, like it's been operating. And and here's the thing.
Just the event space.
The pool is operating, we're, you know, we pay out at the annual, the general fund to support the pool. And it shouldn't be that way. So, but the other thing is.
The gap helps.
Yeah, the other thing is, if we're spending this kinda money on it, we need to get fifty years out of it. And when you start the thing, we should be, the money that we get back from it should be a lot higher because we know that over time. As we have to start repairing things and fixing cracks and replacing pumps and stuff down the road, that that's good gap is gonna get smaller and smaller. So.
We have those conversations and everybody says pools never run in the black. They're always an expense.
It is, yes. It's been close a couple of years.
Our pool, yes, but you can't, no, that's not, that's absolutely not true.
You can't tell me that Highlands is making money. They're not. They're just siphoning tax dollars from a commercial.
They take money out of the recreations and parks to help fund that, but. That no one operates stuff in the in in the red, like that's not how people do.
But it's not a business, it's not a business, it's government.
It's still, they do the same thing.
It's different.
They have a big concession stand. I'd be surprised if they didn't make, I I don't know, and we could probably ask for their numbers and that might be something that we could do. We could probably get some numbers from a couple of different places. And I would be surprised with the amount of money that they do charge, the amount of money that people go in there. I know they have more employees. Um, but I would think that, I mean, I can tell you, every time I've been in there, that place has been so darn busy.
But that's the thing, I don't want it to be darn busy.
Every one of these pools, the larger pools around here, you can find the documents online for them.
I would think so, yeah.
They're all the Athens, Ath- Athens manager sent me their stuff. The their director for Parks and Recreation sent me their annual report last year. Their pool, which is only a few years old, four or five years old.
So, okay, but here's the thing is like, one thing, I wanna say one thing. One, we're not Athens. I just, I want. And the thing is, is like, that conversation of, oh, we can bypass the ADA requirements to make an event space, that's not where I wanna stop. The the conversation should be, oh, we can bypass the ADA requirements that are. That are keeping us from renovating the pool and then focus on the pool. And then if we're lucky and we have extra money left over, then we can focus on an event space. But it shouldn't be. Exactly. So if we're gonna circumvent all of those things and work on ADA compliance and that is what is keeping us from. Renovating the pool, then we need to brainstorm that part and then focus on the pool. The majority of our money that we have or should raise should go towards. The pool and then we need to reevaluate and say, what else can we do and what else can we afford? Do we like pave that area and maybe hopefully like leave some space for an event space later on? That's fine, but I don't want to put all my eggs in a basket and then say, okay, we're gonna put in this event space cuz our pool's gonna be super nice and then never do it or not have the money for it. And then have a janky pool with a really nice event space that we basically wasted a ton of money on. I don't want. That. That is my biggest.
We already have a janky pool.
I know, but that's, I don't want a nice event space that we spend money on next to a janky pool.
It's not a nice event space. It's a building with four walls.
I don't wanna put any money into that and until we. Do something about the pool.
I just wanna say, start off with, the most conscious space on everything, if I may. I'm all for the six million dollar pool. I think the event space and all that forward thinking, like you would not believe, the whole plan on Jason is next level. That's awesome. I would like to see all that. But like you guys understand the four to six million dollars is kinda of a stretch right now. So going back to what Stacy said, I think that that might be realistic, like we we gotta have a pool at the end of the day first and foremost. If that's all our budget, I'll also be it. We'll figure out this ADA thing compliant stuff. First before we can get to the pool. But what if? We can get the six million dollars to do everything. And here's an idea. Um, in Abra Bada, we talked to Westwood City Schools. Maybe we talk to Blenheim Township, Blenheim Township doesn't have a pool. What about instead of calling, this is gonna suck, but instead of calling it Minerva Park Pool, we call it Minerva Park Blenheim Pool, I don't know. Maybe we can pull some tax dollars from Blenheim, they might wanna. Yeah, and and the Westwood City Schools like boom, you know, maybe we have now a ten million dollar pool. Maybe we can go the whole nine yards and have everything all at once. I mean, I'm just thinking of ideas like, I know as a as a community, we can only apply for like two million dollars, something like that.
That's all, that's all we have planned in the budget.
Two days, right?
I'll tell you here, Justin, here, before we go much farther on that, but it's a massive amount of thought.
Yeah, it would be interesting to see how that would work when you. When you have other communities.
Working out.
Donating, or I I don't wanna call it donating, but working together, then who's responsible for the overall and. So they help pay for it, but then we maintain, like I don't, I don't know legally how that, I'm not saying it's not gonna work. I'm just saying, I don't know how that. Because it's our municipal pool in Minerva Park, it would be. When when Westwood Schools calls in and says, hey, we wanna use the pool on this day, how do we tell them no? Because as of right now, we've already told them no. You can't tell them no. Okay, well, we don't have the capacity to have it open, so like you would have to make sure you weed out all of that stuff, like you would obviously be hosting.
We can provide capital funds, we'll ensure that it's to act like the.
Right, yeah.
The stars, the super, the stars. Well, that's great, but that's not for us. We're, we gotta focus on keeping the pool open. Somebody has to be the dreaming.
Yeah.
But we gotta, we gotta make some.
Like, I don't wanna lose something that that is an asset to the community now with all of these. Grandiose plans, which is great. I would love that. But I'm trying to be realistic about this because at this point. Our plan isn't feasible, so we're gonna lose what we have.
That's by ourselves, but I'm saying like, can we realistically perhaps putting together Westwood City Schools to, hey, how about a swimming team?
Fine, let's explore that option. I don't wanna table that. Let's explore that option. Let's, let's, okay, let's go there. Let's pursue that. But I don't want that to be our. Number one plan, like, oh, yeah, this'll work out and Blenheim's gonna sponsor it and it's gonna be fine. Probably not.
If the pool closes while we're on here, that's like traditional, we might as well just move out of the area.
I'm just gonna move to New Albany, like I threatened to do every other week anyways, so, you know.
As as like a government forum, we can, we only have two million dollars in the budget. What do I have to contribute like a business and there's like a business loan that went to high?
So here's, here's the issue. We still have to pay the monthly payments and the the hard part to remind everybody is. We still, no, no, you're fine. We still pay for our sewer projects that we did three or four years. You know, we have loans on all of that stuff and those are million-dollar loans. And we're still paying on some of the water loans. They're almost paid off, but that was from twenty-some years ago. So just because we have a building doesn't mean that this building is paid for. Just because we have sewer projects that are complete doesn't mean that the check has been written. Some of those, we've been fortunate that we have been able to write checks. But I would just like to remind everybody, again, we have different line items for streets and sewers and all that stuff, but at the end of the day, when we don't have enough to pay for it, where do you think it comes from?
Cuz the two million is Jeff saying, hey, we can take that two million dollar bond and pay for this over twenty years and afford it. Cause the two million is Jeff saying, hey, we can take that two million dollar bond and pay for this over twenty years and afford it and come through. Any, any years?
Twenty years. Most of them are twenty to twenty-five.
There's no way we could double it, double the money, double the time? That way we have.
No, no.
So, but then you, again, you have all of the different bills that we continue to pay. We also have a four to six million dollar lake that we're trying to figure out how to fund. And as we're trying to get the money for those particular projects. If you're asking state and federal for this, you're not gonna get this and that and that. A lot of those, when you do apply for them, it says that you can't have applied in the last year. You can't have applied in the last three years. So when you get fed, and I'm not saying that they're all like that, because there's lots of different money and opportunities. Um, we got a pool grant for the baby pool. Um, I will tell you in my heart of hearts, that was the biggest waste of time and money because it would have, it actually cost us as much money to get the grant. With the amount of time that the pool was closed, with the amount of time that it took us to do it, with the fact that we had to hire an engineering firm, MKSK, in the tune of like twenty-five thousand dollars. The grant was only seventy-five, so by the time you added all of that and the year that it took us to do it between myself and the. It, you know, seventy-five thousand dollars sounds great until you actually have to spend fifty thousand to use the seventy-five thousand and it takes you two years to do it. So when you start looking at some of those smaller ones, I'm not saying that it doesn't work and I'm not saying that free money's not great, but free money is not always just free money. Um, so you have to look at those. You know, the, the amphitheater, I have a feeling that one may actually turn out to be pretty darn good because. We didn't have to do all of those extra steps. So with pools, there's a lot more that goes into it, so. My, I'm in agreeance with everything everybody's saying. I, I want everything, but. If we don't have a pool, we don't have a pool.
Right.
So at the end of the day, so back to your initial question, I'll let Jason tune in on this too. Um, towards the end of the meeting, the very first meeting we had with MKSK. I was like, oh, that's great. You know, he's like talking about four million, six million, ten million, twelve, thirteen, whatever he was talking about. I was like, oh, that's great, but where's the million dollar option? You know, what if we just take the concrete that we currently have, fix the walls, fix the floor? I would love to see the floor raised a little bit because I hate the fact that half of the pool is too deep. The one side could be super deep, that's fine, but. We all have floaties and we're float, like I would just rather be able to walk around. Like I go to all inclusive resorts, don't laugh at me, I'm only freaking five foot tall. But I would like for it to be a little bit more even, like I like the three foot to the five foot or whatever, but we have a lot that's just like six foot. And it's not where you're allowed to dive in, whatever. Anyways, do we have to do that just because I say that? No, but. We could fix the floor, we could do different things like that. And he basically told us that it would cost us just as much to do that as it would be to do a whole new floor. Or a whole new pool. And I don't buy it because.
That doesn't make sense.
You don't have to do the concrete work, you don't have to do anything, but like the, they have to like do the.
The concrete would have to be dug up and redone.
I don't think so. Not just redoing the bottoms and the walls.
The walls are steel.
Rip them out and put them back. We already fixed them. I know, again, I'm not, I'm definitely not an engineer. Maybe they have to be ripped out for, because they're so old, or not like that, but. I don't understand why we'd have to rip out everything, but he says that it would cost us more.
I have always disliked when people give you statements like that.
Yeah, because. Yeah, give me.
But is that pretty much what he said though? It would cost us just as much or more.
We're probably looking at close to the same amount of money.
Yeah, show me the line by line item.
Well, I get it, but I don't trust it until I see it.
I had a guy come in and tell me that there was a, right. But that doesn't mean, okay, let's.
So, but we did ask that question and I didn't like his answer either, cause I didn't believe it, but that just because I don't believe it doesn't mean it's not accurate. So, yes. I, I don't know if there, so that, so.
Have you talked about taking these plans to somebody who builds pools and say, hey?
Yes, exactly, yeah. So then we had talked a little bit about, maybe it's time we just call Patterson and have Patterson come out and say, okay. This is where we are. We've had MKSK come out, we.
Can't afford it.
I'm not even talking about another company. I'm just talking about somebody who knows pools.
Patterson.
Patterson Pools is who did our baby pool and they're actually the ones that told us that we would only have about five years left. And building pools is what they do. So I was thinking if we asked them, can this even be done?
So Patterson is the people that do it, MKSK is the people that plan it for Patterson to do it.
Correct. Which it would still have to go out a bit. It doesn't mean Patterson would even get the work. So we would be basically asking them to do us a favor to come out and talk to us. Um, but I don't think we have anything to lose by asking them.
And I should, I should this to, um, Roy Morales. Uh, his son, you, you know, Mel- um, Melinda.
Yep.
Uh, he is a contractor and he's done, um, several pools around here. And he said he'd love to price this out for us if we wanna go there.
Yes.
It would be nice just to ask.
Lifeguard at our pool at some point, I believe.
Perfect, would love that.
Yeah, if we could talk to him and just to have him give us some sort of idea as to what would, and it doesn't mean that we couldn't add. Another lap pool later. It doesn't mean we couldn't add an adults only pool next to it later. Um, I have, I have great ideas, but.
Oh yeah, we looked at all that.
I know. Oh, I know. It's a joke. I, I know we're never gonna have an adults only pool, but. Um, we could still add and add, like everybody's talked about doing these different things in phases. But it would be nice if somebody could come in and say, okay, if we take the floor plan of what we have.
And fix it.
And do it right. And like I said, I know that there was something to do with all of the filters and stuff. They redo that in a different way. They even told us that we wouldn't even be able to reuse the building that we have. Basically, they would tear down that.
Because the, the pump houses now have a basement and.
Yes, so they dig it out.
Prime the pump and all that type of stuff. So the pumps are located below the water level. So they just have to open the valve and it.
Is our pump broken? Is our pump broken?
No, as of right now, it's good.
We have five pumps.
Yeah, we do.
And the new pools, if we rebuild this pool, it's one pump for the whole thing.
But we have five free pumps.
We have five inefficient.
That are really old. They are old, old, and we've already, we've already replaced, what, two or three?
We've replaced two. We have a third spare as a backup right now.
Because the last time we could, we almost had to shut the pool down because we thought it was gonna take too long to get it and they, we ordered the last one that they had.
New pools are chemically re- are, it's all automated. The chemicals are done automatically.
And that's the way the baby pool is.
You know, there's, there's a lot of cost savings involved with it. And also, this pool, the design they gave us also, uh, lim- limits the water. So that we're not cleaning water that we don't use. So the pool that we have right now. We obviously don't need a twelve foot deep pool for the size diving boards we currently have. We did when we have larger boards. And we do have that wide area that goes into the diving well. And that's all waterwork conditioning, that's not really usable water. So you pay for the chemicals, you pay the filter.
But how much is that cost? Talking about like having a pool that is a little bit more usable.
More efficient.
But, okay, so let's do the math on how much more effi- how much money are we gonna save on the efficiency of the new pool versus how much we're gonna pay to build a more. Efficient pool. Do you see what I'm saying? It's like, okay, fine, well, it's gonna be twenty percent more efficient, but you spent fifty percent more to make it twenty percent more efficient.
You're talking percent per volume.
So I'm talking about like cost per ba- yeah. So like, okay, here's a great example. I bought my car. And I was like, I'm gonna save money on gas, but you know what I missed? The fact that this car only takes premium. Okay, cool, that was a genius move. So like, okay, that's my car, fine. But I don't wanna make that mistake for the village. Where it's like on paper, oh yeah, this is so much more efficient, but like, let's do the math on that.
I mean.
Does it work anymore?
Well, you gotta give me the, the breakdown of it.
So let's talk about this. It's seven thirty and I, Tommy, you've kinda said a little bit, not a lot. You've said a little bit, not a lot. I always talk a lot. Um, and you guys have, does anybody wanna say anything else before we kinda talk about, okay, where do we go from here?
Yeah.
I mean, I think everybody wants a pool. I don't think, I haven't heard anybody say shut it down. I think everybody, I mean, I think we all want. The pipe dream.
Mm-hmm.
Um, how do we get there? It may take a few years to get there. It doesn't mean we're not gonna do all of them. But what do we do in the event that we do only have a year or two left?
I want to call somebody in to have them look at it, who's not an engineer, whose job is to re-engineer a pool. I want to have somebody come in and look at it and say, okay.
Do you wanna try him to see if he would look at it and if he's willing to come talk to us for like twenty minutes or?
Or at least he could be like, listen, this is bad, or, hey, I know a guy. And at least we, we could have some leads on that, instead of calling a person whose sole job is to re-engineer a new pool.
Cause I think there's so many layers to paving the roads and utilities and getting it prepared to put that there. And then you go, maybe we still do have a six million dollar pool. In twenty twenty-eight to put in, but now we don't have so many things to do because we manage some of that through.
Other projects.
Correct. Exactly, yeah. And then that stuff. And then you can kind of later know, okay, now that feels a little bit more palatable because.
Absolutely.
We still have a pool that people enjoy and we're continuously trying to make it a great place to be, but it's still kinda homey and gotta still.
And I still think they're giving us the high end.
I think so too.
Yeah.
So, and we're trying to make a decision off six million dollars and we really don't know that this is six million dollars.
No, because I also think that this project for sure does need to be split into different projects for the simple fact that. Do you call like, um, I'm, I'm trying to think of like one of your great examples that you just had, cause that was a good example, I did not know that. Um, but you don't have a pool person, build your building. Because these are usually Patterson pools, doesn't, so what are they gonna do? They're gonna call somebody, tap on ten, fifteen, twenty percent. So the building needs to be a separate project, the pool needs to be a separate project. Um, because if not, you're paying this person to essentially be your project manager of different projects. So you're paying. You're paying people to do projects that they're not really doing and I can't think of something that. You, I think you guys know where I'm going with that.
A middleman.
You're, yeah, you're paying the middle.
Anytime you manage a.
Yeah, you're going to.
Percent of that is going to the person.
Well, we have, we have a guy named Eric that that's his job. He does a lot of that stuff, so, I mean, he did all of this here. So, I mean, as far as that goes down there, I feel like we would be able to get, um. We would be able to do, I, I feel like we would be able to do some of these projects completely separate. It's not gonna end up being that, like you. You take out the parking lot, you take out that, um, all the landscaping cost, which was.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think we spent that much landscaping in all of the villages of Minerva Park. And they have that total in there.
And they're gonna take out the trees I like and put new trees in.
No, yeah, I agree. I think if we took out those big trees, I think we're gonna have a lot of upset people.
Oh yeah, no.
Yeah, why don't we?
This doesn't call to take out any of those trees.
Yeah, guys, like, I think this is.
So I think, okay, so next step is, Jason, can you call him and see if he has any interest in, A, putting it together? And I think it would be, what does something like this really look like? And then the, the world famous question of mine and Tommy's is the same thing. Okay, what would it really look like to fix this pool? Again, doesn't mean we aren't gonna add a slide, doesn't mean we're not gonna do all of that, but. What would it be to guarantee us that, and I'm not even saying we wouldn't put the stuff underneath. Like, can that be done? Can this all be hooked up to new pumps? Like, can we really have a new pump house underwater in this new? You know what I mean? So like, what is, what is the, what is the least expensive way to fix this so we are guaranteed another fifty years? I'm not saying by is five. I'm saying like, if we're gonna do this, I think Tommy, you're probably in agreeance with that.
Yeah.
We, we, and we're not trying to say, what, what can you do to fix this for five years? We're saying, what can you do to get us a pool that's gonna last fifty years? So, and it might be that.
So to me, that's phase one. You know, phase one is, what can we do to just have the pool?
Keep the pool alive.
Phase two is.
Save the pool.
It's basically what the subcommittee would, I think, define as then what would be the next thing that, that we would add. Because if phase one is a twenty million, or is a two million dollar loan or twenty years. I don't know when the residents are gonna be willing to vote for more money for the pool. And, and I feel like the pool is the main thing we need to do, but it's phase one and we say, and here's what else we can have. As we build toward it.
Right, as we continue to try to get more funding and as we continue to try to get, and I do think, I do, and maybe I'm wrong. I would think the buildings would be eas- I don't know. I don't know if the pool would be easier as a capital project or the buildings would be easier as a capital project.
I think pool, buildings without a pool is hard to justify. So, oh, what are you guys doing? Building pool buildings? How's your pool looking? We don't have one. Who's gonna approve that?
You can't split two million dollars.
Well, perhaps maybe the event center, but I do agree with Stacy. If we're gonna do this in like an event center, it can't be free to the residents. And they need to just understand that, yeah, your income tax money may have gotten it so far, but to maintain it and pay for the outgoing expenses. You're gonna have to pay. And, and maybe it's a reduced price for residents and then we charge anyone outside of the village, you know, whatever the full price would be. But we can build it and have it frankly be treated the same way. The municipal building is treated that it tends to be free to certain groups and, and that sort of thing.
Yeah, no, I completely agree. I think, I think the other part to that is you can't continue to do that considering the fact that it's gonna be a lot more. And, and maybe, maybe not, because again, depending on the price, I mean, we have had several people come in here and say, a hundred and fifty dollars, you've lost your mind. So, I mean, they think it's too expensive and I'm not, I, I don't whatsoever have you ever tried to price other places, but. Residents do feel like a hundred and fifty dollars to have like a baby shower or something is way too expensive for residents. I don't know what people would expect in a building like that. I don't know. I don't, I don't know what you could get away with. I don't wanna say. I hate to say the words get away with charging, cause we don't wanna overcharge our residents, but.
Justifying the village's cost.
I don't know how you would.
It's not, we're, we're asking for the money back that it takes to maintain it after a baby shower. And I think that is, I'm not sorry about saying that. I'm not sorry about charging that because otherwise everybody else pays for somebody's baby shower that they're not invited to. So either invite me, cause I have FOMO, or maybe you can't afford to have this baby shower here, sorry.
That's a good point. To just show people where their money's going, I think is very helpful too. You know, what it costs, whoever does it, who comes in and cleans up and locks up and makes sure it's put back the way it's supposed to be. Cause most residents are probably wonderful, some are, and so there's, there's a cost.
We've been, we've been very fortunate. With the little things that we've had in here, we've been really fortunate that most everybody cleans this up pretty darn well.
Yeah.
So it's just a very small handful and, and again, it was probably a child that just somebody took their eyes off after a few minutes, so. Um, we've been really fortunate with that. So the hardest part has been the delivery of keys and, and like the, the little things.
Right, but that's still somebody's time.
Well, yeah, it's Barb's, cause she's had to meet people over here on Fridays and Saturdays after three o'clock and so it's, yeah.
That's the thing is like, we still have to respect that person's time.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there could potentially be some better options or other options of getting that, yeah. And, and again, that might be something that we have down there, just a keypad of some sort that gets people in and out. Um, and then we change it daily or something like that. So there's gotta be a way to do it, to make it easy like that, but I think.
Airbnb's do it all the time. That was the lockbox is something like that.
Yeah.
We don't even have a pool. That's the thing is like, guys, we're talking about landscaping when we haven't even built our house. Like, it, it would be nice to have a fountain. I know, it would be nice to have some fancy mimosa trees and a fountain and a Japanese maple. But like, you don't have a bathroom to poop in, so let's talk about that first. Like, I feel like we need to start with the basics. And then talk about all these other fancy things that I would love to have, you know that I love fancy things. But nobody's gonna enjoy those fancy things if you don't have the main attraction there.
Right. Yeah, and that's what's so important about defining phase one and whether that's the pool subcommittee, whether that's, you know. Jason and a couple different engineering groups, whatever, but you know, what are the basics that we need to just have a pool?
And Jason, the other thing, I feel like. I'm, I didn't love, and that's what you guys told me, cause I wasn't there, was that. You told them what our list of needs, wants and budget was and they seemed to ignore that.
What do you mean?
When you were like, we, we can't afford all this fancy stuff, like take it out and they didn't. You know what I mean?
They took out.
Yeah, cause it started at what, like eleven or thirteen million or something?
Took out a lot of what was in there. They basically left, it, it's a pretty simple pool. It's a lap pool that, and the diving well and the lap pool are the same thing. So it's no two separate any longer. It's a zero entry family pool and it's a slide area.
But the pool itself was only what?
I think it was one point two.
So the pool itself is nothing. It's the rest of it that is.
The slide.
But it does feel.
But that's not the pump house either and.
We'll rent a trailer in the meantime.
Keep our pump house till we can afford a better one and then dig a new one next door and then shut the other one down.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, yeah.
Like, why can't we do that?
That's what I'm saying, I don't know if that's possible. That's what I was saying about ours, like, can that even be done? Like, if you fix ours. Could that be done?
Right.
And get rid of the pump house? Or is that not, I, I don't, I have no idea. Does it have to be underneath? How much does that cost? Is there an option? Is there a, this is a better option if it's underneath and this is the other option and this is twenty-five grand and this is nothing? Like, I don't know.
I, and that's the other example is, okay, so my air conditioner is from the seventies. Okay, it's not very efficient. It is not as efficient as a new air conditioner would be. But a new air conditioner that is more efficient would still not save me money by the purchase price over the amount that I'm not saving. Through the ineff- inefficiency of my old one. Like. Math.
So I think almost, I don't wanna say we're all on the same page, but I think we're all on the same page right now. We have to see what it would be just to.
We gotta cut our costs.
Yeah, and what would it be if we did the pool and what would we have to do to the building to be able to just do the pool right now? Knowing that we all, I don't think there's anybody that in the long run, we don't want an event space. I think event space would be great. Um, you're, because I, I do think it would be nice to keep the people out of here.
Yeah.
And I don't mean that in a bad. And I don't mean that in a bad way. I think meetings and stuff, you know, we have a lot of smaller meetings and things like that. But baby showers with cake and ice cream, and I, I've been to one here, and it was great, don't get me wrong, but this is, this is still a, this is still. What I would, yeah, I mean, I still feel like this is not where a Christmas party should be, uh, for the community, and call me crazy. Um, and it was, and it worked, and it, like I said, it would, it worked, but it would be nice to have it in. An event space that, I, I don't know, maybe I'm out along by saying that.
An event space with a concrete hose downable floor.
Well, I don't think it has to, I mean, I feel like you could do a nice decent, like.
I used to.
And maybe not.
No, and so, the zoo has one of those, and they would do the Christmas parties, it was just basically a glass garage with glass doors. And in the summer, they would open it, and it would be like a water, open, air pavilion, and in the winter, they would close it.
Did it have radiant heat?
And it was radiant, yeah, heat, and the Christmas parties were there, it was still beautiful, you could see the water, whatever. See, I think that's like, yeah. And it was a concrete garage with a glass ceiling and glass doors that opened up in the summertime.
That's all we're talking about here.
Right, which is great, but first, let's do the pool, and then, let's.
I'm okay with pouring a concrete slab.
So, just looking at this, what they put on here. Uh, the pool itself, so that's the lap pool, the family pool, the, uh, tr- transition area, and the pool area, and the dive pool. One point three.
Okay.
And then, uh, the slide complex was three hundred and fifty thousand.
No.
Competition, uh, equipment, twenty thousand. The portable aqua lift, that's to get a handicap person into the pool, is around seventy-five hundred, and then pool safety and accessibility equipment, fifteen. And that's three hundred ninety-two.
Why do we need a lift if we're gonna do a zero entry?
Uh. Uh, it could be a requirement, I don't know.
Uh, yeah.
Like a safety, like if there's something in emergency?
I mean, I know that. I, I'm trying to think if I know of any newer pools that have been built that don't have those.
Yeah, I can't.
Now, most hotels even have them.
Um, so it might be a new safety.
But I guess all the ones I'm thinking of are not zero entry.
Hmm.
No. I don't know.
I mean, that's just a question.
I mean, that's cheaper than.
Seventy-five hundred dollars.
That's not stopping us from doing it or something.
How much cheaper would it be to have the lift and not zero entry?
Um, I don't know.
So.
So the question is, is that the concrete around it, is that the? Pump house then for that? And then the electrical, so if we're at one point, like what, I think, and maybe that would be the first question, what would it entail to get the pool up and running? That pool up and running, no landscape, no.
Nothing.
Lights, no cameras, no anything.
Concrete works probably another two hundred thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe.
So we basically need to find the cheapest way to make that bathroom.
Two accessible means of entry with at least one being a pool lift or smoke entry. Small pools only require that one.
So why can't we put two?
I mean.
Now, it sounds like that's what they're talking about, are ladders out a second option?
Large pools are more than three hundred linear feet. I don't know.
Say, say what you're.
Large pools are three hundred.
No, what was, say.
Read that one more time.
Uh, large pools must have two accessible means of entry.
Yeah, I don't think a ladder's considered accessible.
Okay.
So, why can't we put two lifts in? No, I'm sorry.
Has to be, I guess.
Rita doesn't say that, but two lifts.
With one being a pool lift or smoke entry.
So, two pools.
So if one is a lift, it says one or the other, what would the second one be? Is there another thing we're not thinking?
No, you can have two lifts. For a large pool, or we can make a pool that's two hundred ninety-nine linear feet.
I don't know what ours is. So.
There's ways to think about this critically.
You need to go like someone.
Oh, it's just, it's just our buddy.
He didn't.
I swear to the other doors unlocked.
But that's, but that's the thing, is like, we've gotta, we've gotta be creative with this. So I think our first thing is, is there a cheaper way? And then our second thing is, how do we make our bathrooms eighty-eight combined so we can proceed? In the most cost-effective way possible.
Motion to leave.
No, I mean, I do feel like we're all on the same page.
For sure.
Okay.
We're saying the same thing.
Um, I had, uh, I guess, are we, are we, are we good with our pool top?
I think we're good with our pool, I mean, yeah, I think we're all on the same.
Are we on the same page, or somebody like, I will die if it's not marble and gold?
We want marble and gold?
No.
No.
We can't afford marble, marble can't be afforded.
Someone had commented on the Facebook about the tree lining streets of West Farview that are no longer when they added the extra turn lane in the middle. I'm currently working on getting in contact with the board. In a very thoughtful but thoughtful way, cause I don't want to go at that. And, uh, I wanna get the result, but I also don't wanna burp bridges or anything, you know? So I'm, I'm talking to someone, um, that has some relationships with that.
Also, for, just, and maybe I'll message you tomorrow, because I know Barb was working on. Reaching out to them as well, and I don't know if some people are gone because of summer.
So, say what you said again, what are you doing?
The, so when we, Jason, when we bought our houses, and you pulled off with one sixty-one on a Farview. There were trees lining. I remember that because from my own citizen, I was like, oh my gosh, in twenty years, I can't wait to see this. Tree-lined tour that we're driving to, it's gonna be so beautiful.
Yeah, and I, I made that comment before the middle school was finished. Are we getting those to, I don't know those to, those probably to Eric and Mike? Because they were kind of the ones that were checking stuff off, I said, can we get them to put that back in with the fences that were taken out? Cause I guarantee you, the village paid for those as part of the infrastructure.
Well, I mean, they mentioned the fences, but I'm waiting for us to.
I would love the trees, I think the whole thing just made it look nice.
It was way nicer, and I think that I, and so I'm working on, how, what's the best way to reach out, so I'm saying, hey, listen. Can we put this back the way it was after you expanded it to view what the traffic?
And I know we had been working on it too, so let me see if we've made it a headway as well. So, and if we have, and if we have a contact, I can even just forward it to you and just let you keep going where you're going. Um, so yes, I know that that's going on too.
I wanted to share that with you guys.
That'd be awesome.
It would be good for everything.
Does anybody else have anything? Um, I have like five things, except my mind is blank. I'm gonna tell, this is all gonna come up with. Anything we forget, I'll write down for Thursday. Um, I've had some concerns about the Jordan Road project, um, okay. So, it's very difficult for us to cut our grass, because the ruts are so big.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's chunks of dirt, I can't get my lawnmower through there, so I've had to have somebody come in and do it, my next door neighbor doesn't have. They have also reached out that they cannot get their lawnmower through there. So now some of our grass is like super tall, um, and I don't, so I reached out to Mike, I just sent him, I forwarded it to him. Um, whatever, Monday night, no, Tuesday, I would've done it Tuesday. Um, so I'm waiting to hear from Mike exactly what is on the punch list right now. The other thing is, the fence used to go further down, and that has not been reinstalled, um, the fence stops right there now. So they were making sure, because it used to go back behind theirs, and it doesn't go back through there now, and there, now there's no trees, there's no nothing, cause everything has been cut out. So now, we just have a perfect view of.
Stuff.
Nicely, stuff, that's the, what I'm gonna call it, um, so. The fence just kinda stops, that was supposed to go on, all of us thought. Um, and I don't know if they can come back out and help regrade, I don't know what we're gonna do, because many of us cannot, I mean, we all have riding lawnmowers, and we cannot. We can't do them, I mean, it's just, rocks are shooting everywhere as we go through there, you cannot do it.
So that was on the punch list, I think the thing was, he was trying to get them to come out and do a smaller project somewhere else at the same time.
Yes.
But it's, I'm getting very impatient in that.
It's been a couple weeks, yeah.
It's enough, it's like, this, it's been more than a couple weeks, it's been like a month.
That's what I'm saying, it's been, it's been a couple weeks already, so.
I think that's, everybody, it's like the middle of summer, and you guys still can't mow your lawn, right? That's not, no.
I let mine go for about four weeks, and I had to call somebody in with a commercial lawnmower, and it was awful. It was, everything was just shooting everywhere, so, and it looks horrible. Um, so again, I didn't know that it was that bad, because. From where I can, I mean, it's an acre, we have an acre, so I just thought it was, I let it grow in, let it grow in, and. Um, when I went back there and actually tried it, so I didn't realize until the last meeting, um, so I thought it was really fine. And then, like I said, now I've had a resident reach out to me, so, working on that. Um, and then the other thing was. I met with a resident today in regards to another tree in the reserve that needs taking care of, so I already messaged Brad about that one. But that is not what I was gonna tell you.
There's a couple dead branches at the pool, in those trees as well.
Um, we'll talk, I'll go look tomorrow, and I'll see if I can get him down there and do those at the same time. Um, but if anybody has anything like that, just let me know, because I usually just message them and say, hey, can you go take care of these, so, um. There really was one really big, and I know we're all ready to go, and I cannot think for anything, what it was.
There was a branch hanging still in the tree over there in the bathroom that fell down in front of me when I was walking in the day.
Can you even get a picture of it or tell me whose house it's behind or where it's on somewhere?
Brad, he's just gonna fall any second, honestly can't get it, because it's so far up.
Okay, I know what you're talking about, that is gonna be an issue, um, I think I know what you're talking about, I've heard about that. So, I don't know, I can't remember any, I'm gonna have to write it down, but I knew that those, the Jordan Road thing was one.
That's sewers? Are you talking about sewer? We, we're working on that still.
Yeah.
The only other thing is, we need to have a meeting about the lakes, we gotta figure out.
That's gonna be, okay, so, okay, so I also know, and I'm just gonna say it here, I also know you guys did have a resident come in and was talking about, um.
Lakes.
The lakes, and that letter, but we've already, okay, I've known about this for years, we've already gone over this. If you read the very next section, the very next section is, it can be done. Um, you do not have to if it has anything to do with the health, safety, and that is great, except that is not, if you, you have to read the whole thing. Um, our attorneys have already looked, it doesn't mean we're going that way, um, but we have been fully aware of that for years, um. That we've had that document, I, I don't wanna say years, years, but probably a good two years. Jesse's already looked into it for us, um, he'd actually wrote a memo on that particular document. Um, so again, that's not, I don't, I guess, I just don't want you guys to think we've been investigating something that can't be done. We've been investigating something because it can be done. Um, it doesn't mean that it's not gonna upset people, but I'm just saying, like, we've looked at every different option, we've known that that exists, and. Their memo basically states that, because of the health, safety, and da-da-da-da-da, cause eventually it's going to clear, fill it, if, anyway, so. That was that, I just, I wasn't here for that, um, but Jesse and I have already talked about that before. Um, I think they told you four hundred and some Rita letters went out. Um, so, um, we had a meeting with Jesse about that. Um, we are gonna be taking an extremely, um. We will get in more detail with that with you guys, but we are going to be very aggressive getting these people to file.
Okay.
So, I am just letting you guys know that now, and if you guys have an issue with it, you're gonna have to have a conversation with me, because I. I get the resident complaints that do pay, um, and they're fed up, and if you're pay, you know, so. Um, those letters have already gone out, so people have already started getting them, we did have somebody come in and try to get their scandal, they didn't know. Um, so we directed them, it's on the web, so if anybody reaches out, it's on the website what they need to do. Um, they need to reach out to Rita, they cannot come in here and file or pay or anything like that, and basically what I'm saying is. We, right now, we're going after non-filers, we don't know how much money they owe, they may owe nothing, um, if they're retired, but you still have to file. Um, so anyways, there's that, that, so we've, we've only had one phone call from Matt, and then there was one last thing that I was, it was, had to do with that.
Will that be in our upcoming newsletter, or do we need to?
Yes, we're actually working on that, the deadline is on the twenty-second. Um, so we were working on, because we had just met with Jesse, I don't know if we are ready to put something so severe, because it's gonna be at least two months before this happens. Because they, they send out the first letter, and then after thirty days, they get basically like a, a summons type, um, whatever, they're not gonna, you know, they're not gonna. Basically, it's a, another threat letter after thirty days, and then we're gonna give them thirty days from that. So, there is going to be, um, a very aggressive approach, and we are working with Jesse to make sure we're not overstepping. But we are discussing bench warrants, we are discussing, you name it, and I'm not kidding. Like, they, yes, we are discussing fines, we're discussing all of the above, because, here's the thing, this has been going on since twenty fifteen. Um, the amount, we know it's over twenty-five percent just over there, and people don't care. Um, they get these letters. This is the third time we have done this process, so this is not new, these letters going out, we do every other year. And two years ago, we did it, and a couple people, you know, took care of it and responded, and again, there are deceased, I, I don't wanna make this sound like there's four hundred, whatever, seventies, whatever. We know that there are deceased people on this list, we know that there are people that probably are retired. So the amount of people are less than that, but they still, we still need to just figure it out and get to where we're going. Okay, so then. Um, the only other things, the pre-construction meeting for Maplewood for me is gonna be on Wednesday. So on Wednesday, so on Thursday, I should have some information for you guys. Start date, closer date, everything date, I should, I'm hoping that I have that stuff for you guys Thursday, cause I'm meeting on Wednesday with the construction company.
And the maintenance building?
Not yet. We are hoping that the maintenance building is going out to bid by next month, and I'm gonna leave it at that, that has been a heavy topic right now. Um. Last but not least is the then Thursday, I have a meeting about the employee handbook, um, whether or not you guys remember this, but early on last year. You guys had approved money for us to revise our nineteen seventy-six handbook, and I'm making that up, I don't know what year it was from, but it is extremely out of date. Ours is about twenty-six pages, and the new one is about fifty-some pages, because there's. There's actual like state wall type stuff that needs to be in our handbook that's not in there. So they have been working on it now since January, and I think you guys passed it in December, but since January. Um, I do believe that that is gonna come to you guys, but there is, I am currently going page by page, Jeff has already gone page by page, Leah is going page by page. But then we have to cross-reference it with some of the police stuff, um, to make sure it's not conflicting. But I'm gonna try to figure out a way to make you guys, because there are going to be so, again, twenty-some pages to fifty pages. So I do think it goes in front of you guys, I don't think we just fix it, I think it does go to you guys, so trying to figure out the best way to let you guys know what's changed. Um, but for the most part, it's. Getting it to twenty twenty-four. Maternity leave, paternity leave, all of, I mean, that is barely in there, military leave, um, and again, most of it, we're following state. Or copying it from Westerville, copying it from some of the other places, so, that's coming, um, we're having that meeting on. I believe it's, I'm almost positive it's Thursday, so Thursday night, I should have quite a bit of information for you guys. Um, and just kinda give you an update on, you know, what we've actually been doing in here, so, that's all I have. It's eight o'clock. Does anybody have anything else they wanna talk about, or say?
Thursday at six thirty P M.
Six thirty P M is the work session, followed by.
We'll be doing some funding meeting at six forty-five.
At six forty-five, so what we'll do with that is, we'll start it at six thirty, we'll talk about as much as we possibly can. Um, and then we will go into his, and then if we need to go. Talk about other stuff, we can always do that in old business, new business, whatever we don't get through for the first thing. So what, what are we talking about? Whose, whose, um, things are this Thursday?
Rexon Parks, it's, uh, Streets, and it, it was supposed to be, um, services, but we. Exactly talked about services last time.
So, let's do Streets, we can, if we don't have anything, well, Streets, we can probably just give the updates for the meeting that I have there.
Yeah, I got nothing.
And then Parks and Rec, we probably did most of that tonight, so hopefully we can just kinda, so if anybody has anything for the work session on that one. Um, and then, like I said, once we get into that, the P and Z meeting is being canceled as we speak for, um.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, this upcoming Wednesday, the Phantom Fireworks is gonna go, and it should, it's gonna be in the newsletter, um, for this month. It's gonna be August.
Eighteenth through nineteenth, that Wednesday.
Whatever that Wednesday is, yeah.
You were telling fourteen.
I thought it was the fourteenth too.
That's right.
That is, okay, so. What's that?
Have they submitted an application?
Yes. Um, I will make sure you guys all get that, I, I, I thought it was sent to you guys.
I didn't get it.
I agree.
I believe it came in the mail the day I was leaving.
Kind of, I didn't get it.
So, let me see what it's, okay.
I'm just a P and Z lady.
No, 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 let me find, I'll find out.
Oh, that's just it.
Let me find that, that, um, where it is, and if it's been scanned in or anything like that, I'll find that out tomorrow.
I met Brady a couple of times about, you know, hey, are we having anything, let's let people know.
Well, it's gonna be in the newsletter, I mean, I, it's, yes.
Sure, I mean, that's how, other.
Well, so then I did, and I'm gonna, once again, triple ver, okay, I'm gonna say quadruple verify it. Because for some reason, I was thinking that it needed to be like a notice or something like that for it, but I was told that there doesn't need to be, and there doesn't need to be for council. And I don't know if the, no, I mean, additional, like into a newspaper or any kinds of. Um, postcards or anything like that that needs to go out or whatever, so, I, I don't believe there does need to be any, so, the meeting then. Is, might get rearranged for September, so just, we'll talk about this next week. So just be prepared for it, because I think they're coming in front of council September fifth, which is actually our technical work session. Does that sound right? Am I making that up?
September?
September fifth.
September fifth is a work session, yeah.
Is the work session, but I think.
So, do they need to come?
Before council?
Yeah.
Yeah, even if planning and zoning says no, they're, they're gonna come to council.
Are you sure about that?
I know what Brady's arguing, and it's, I'm told it's not accurate. Even if planning and zoning tells them. Even if planning and zoning tells them no, it's going to come in front of council. It, I guarantee you it's going to come in front of council.
That's not what I'm arguing. It's, I remember talking about it and I thought the new, what we passed on purpose was that it would end up planning and zoning.
I don't think it's going to. I think it's gonna come to council.
Okay.
Even if they all say no, it's my understanding, it's, it's, I'm, I'm gonna rely on Jesse.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know. Okay, here's what I'm gonna say.
You don't know? Okay.
I have heard the same thing you have heard. And I've also heard that there's a reason we're already scheduling it for council because I, I've been told that that is not a hundred percent accurate. I don't know the answer. I am not the attorney and I'm going to go with what the attorney says.
Mm-hmm.
Because at the end of the day, if the village gets sued, then it doesn't have anything to do with me. Um, so yes, I don't know. I, I really truly don't know. Um, I think Jesse will probably, you know, acknowledge, you know, how, how, the process, the process, once we get a little bit closer again. Um, and that's that. I mean, I think we're all in the same boat at this point. Council, whether planning and zoning approves it or doesn't approve it, council approves it, doesn't approve it. Um, they will have their opportunity. If we all do say no, they'll have their opportunity to take it further if they decide that they have been wronged. So that's that.
Yeah.
So that's that.
That's all we, I, all I'm saying is I thought that we passed the new, um, rules and the bylaws that they would have the final say on that, that planning and zoning didn't have to.
I, I think at least mine, I'm not a lawyer.
I'm not either.
Uh, but there, there's certain criteria that you can ask them to meet. And if they meet that criteria for the conditional use, then.
The conditional use, yeah, I understand that.
You, you have a put it in pathway to do something in planning and zoning, but I kinda talk about that. I do.
But my concern is if they don't meet it and P and Z says no.
Yeah, because what's the point of P and Z?
Exactly.
When you give the residents and planning and zoning can't have.
And maybe it's because Jesse and them all, and I'm, I'm speaking off, totally off the wall. Maybe they already know that it meets the criterias that we have set. I'm not saying it does. I, I've not seen the application. I believe it came the day I was leaving. So, but.
It's frustrating to be in council and, you know, all of a sudden showing up Thursday, like, here's a whole lot of information. Would you like, you know, please?
Yeah, I will, I will reach, I will reach out to. I don't like that at all. You know that.
Or maybe I do have it and I was supposed to forward it, so let's find out. I don't think, no, I really don't think I have it. Hang on.
Mayor.
You better not have it.
What if Tommy has it?
I would laugh.
You're slightly better at it.
Gosh, I really thought.
Well, the plastic's really recital anyway. I don't think it is either, but I still.
Okay, let's just do this.
Has?
I don't, I was.
All I could say is I'm gonna read this word for word. We just got word that Phantom is okay with the P and Z hearing on August fourteenth and then the meeting with council will take place on Thursday, September fifth. First meeting for the conditional use hearing, first the meeting for the conditional use hearing and then they can go into a work session if time allows. And then please cancel the meeting for July twenty-fourth for planning and zoning.
But we don't vote on anything at the work session. They just bring it to us.
No, it would be, it would be the conditional use hearing on, we would make it a meeting first and then we would go to a work session. There would be two hearings back to back, the August fourteenth and then the meeting with council will take place Thursday, September fifth. First the special meeting and then the work session.
Okay.
So yes. Has the application been sent to council?
Okay, and then at some point we need to figure out what we're doing with the lakes because we don't have a backup plan right now.
Um, I can tell you that they need guidance from you guys to know which way you guys want to go.
That's what I'm saying is we need to figure out what we're doing.
And, you know, nobody can really get firm numbers or final numbers or anything like that until we find, until we get to the point. I mean, these are all great, you know, potential numbers, but.
And that was a conversation that Jeff said about Eric should be planning what we need to plan to do all the pathways that we got funding for as well as
Right.
that to make sure that that's a very comprehensive plan so we can have that shovel-ready project for additional funding moving later on. And that's on his plate.
But I also feel like we need to have more hands in it. Well, here's my thought. We've gotten two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is amazing, but pennies.
Correct.
In comparison. So at the end of the day, I think still the guidance that they need is which way, regardless, we have to get funding. So whether we're trying to get X, Y, or Z, and like Stacy was asking, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, but basically like, is there more money if we go this direction or is there more money if we go this direction?
That's clearly what I was asking.
So that was, I mean, I, I grasp it like instantly. I don't know that we know all of those answers. So I think in, at the end of the day, I think kind of what, where we are right this minute is, and, and again, I'm treading lightly because I don't want people to think I'm leaning one way or the other because I've seen the numbers too. Dredge, fill in the lake, put the walking paths in, do all of that as one project. Numbers aside, which way do you guys wanna go? I think is kind of what we're asking. And I'm, and I don't mean it like I want to fill in the lakes, but you can't look at the numbers as equal to equal because this is three different projects combined in one. This is dredging the lakes, moving on with life. You still don't have walking paths. You still don't have any of this stuff.
Yeah.
But this number was much prettier.
But dredging doesn't happen at all unless we get additional funding.
We're going to have to get additional funding, but you're gonna have to get additional funding no matter what because we're still gonna have to dredge this one.
I know. Eric said we can't get funding for dredging.
This particular one did not, no, just this particular one that they had applied for does not accept dredging as that project. So federal funding, there could potentially be another pot of money that will allow dredging. So this one, the, my understanding is the way that this application was, this application did not, it was for anything but dredging, but it doesn't mean that there's not other ones that we couldn't get for dredging. So regardless, we need something for dredging, whether we fill in this lake, don't fill.
We're gonna have to spend a million dollars on the engineering for whatever we choose to do so we can have that thing ready.
Ready to go.
And I mean, it's not, I don't know if it's a million dollars or not, just.
No, it's probably a hundred grand plus.
But here's the thing, it's like, I don't want to do an all-in project. We don't have the money for because if we do an all-in project and we run out of money, it will be a half-completed forever project where we just have a bog swamp.
I don't think there's other than pathways and other than forbays, additional, like I don't know how you can do this in phases. Like I really don't, unless you just say, we're gonna dredge the North Lake and
Yeah.
five years from now, we're gonna try to dredge the other one. I don't know. Short of that, I don't know how you could separate this project.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think that's our only project because that's what we can afford and stomach in the meantime, because, you know what I mean?
So I think there, everybody is just kinda sitting in a holding pattern to say, you know, in a perfect world, which way do you want us to try to get money for? Because we can't move forward on a master plan until we know what the plan, what we're trying to plan for. And again, not advocating for either one, but I think she's correct. We need to have one more final, this is the way we want to go.
Or at least we need to like rate them. One is, like, but even then be like, okay, I want one. If one is unavailable, then three. Okay? Instead of being like, I want one, and then they come back and say, just kidding, one is a bajillion dollars. Now, like, you need to rank them in order of what you want and then go in that order. And if that one doesn't work out, then you immediately know what your next step is instead of having to go back to the drawing board every time and then talking about it and talking about it and talking about it and waiting for them to, with them waiting for us to come up with a, a second part. And then it's that back and forth that takes up a lot of time and then scheduling a meeting. We, we need to sit down, pick our options in order and that is what we need to do. If not A, then what? Do you see what I'm saying? It's like, we already need to be proactive and come up with a Plan B and a Plan C instead of saying.
We already have A, B, C, and D. Those are our plans, right?
Right, so, okay, so we wanted to fill it in and then we were like, okay, it's the cheapest one. That's the one we picked. And then it came back as five million dollars, so, okay, that's no longer an option. Now what?
Well, it's still an option.
I, I'm only speaking for myself. I don't think it is an option for me personally because the ins, the.
So it's your least favorite.
It is the least concrete and the most risk if we don't get the money. In that we could do a very large disservice to this community if we don't follow through with the whole project with money that we currently don't have and are very much not guaranteed to get for years. So if we spend that money and we run out in the middle and we have a half-completed project for five years, I will have a big problem with that and I think I won't be the only one. And that is my fear is that we go ahead with this project and say, okay, it's the best idea to fill it in, dredge this, put all that junk in there. And then we get stuck.
But you're not gonna sign a contract without a full project. I, I don't, I mean, if you do, if we're gonna dredge, vote for, if we're gonna do that, no, I'm saying you wouldn't start it until you had the funds.
But then, we don't do anything for now and then we waste the money from the TIF.
You're not gonna get it done before the TIF anyways. That's not gonna happen.
Okay, so then.
I don't even, at this point, I'm holding my breath that the meeting and scratch is gonna be done before the TIF.
Part three is we need to figure out if there's anything else we wanna do with the TIF that can be done soon.
The only thing we're allowed to do is walking paths because that's what we pass it for.
And at this point, we're in July for that.
It doesn't have to be necessarily for that.
And, I mean,
What we put on the list.
That seems a little shady going back and saying, hey, psych, we actually aren't gonna use it for this.
Yeah.
What we told you we were gonna use it for.
It was the lakes, the maintenance garage. Now, we can still, we've talked about calling out an arborist and starting to get some of the trees around the lakes cut down. Um, clearing out some of the dead debris and, um, things like that. And again, I guess I use the word arborist. It's not gonna be me going and picking which trees we're cutting out because that'd be a bad idea.
Something's better than nothing.
Yeah, so.
So let's do that.
So, well, I think we've started talking about, is that something feasible that we can do?
Yeah.
Um, but is that also something that you're gonna upset all these people right now if it's something that we're not even doing for five years? Again, we're just gonna start willy-nilly and cutting trees down, spending a hundred grand and then not finishing the project, so.
New project against phase one.
Mm-hmm, which is at least let's clean it, clean up what we can.
Clean up, yeah, so you call it a cleanup project. You call it, you know, so I, so yes, there are still things that we can do as part of the lake project. Um, that would work. We believe that would work. Um.
Let's just go ahead and do that because otherwise we're just not gonna see that money and we're not gonna use it and we're gonna have to spend it later. Let's at least see what we can clean up back there because it needs to.
Cause we're thinking that that's gonna be well over a hundred thousand dollars. I mean, you figure three thousand dollars tree.
Okay, let's just go ahead and do that. Anybody else against that, disagree? Because I don't wanna.
It's probably something that's gonna have to come back to council to approve and do all that. So we'll talk to arborists and see what we need to do to get that done.
Do something so we don't at least waste that TIF money and not, and do nothing. Unless somebody comes up with a more creative idea, which I don't, I don't have that right now.
That's the one that's obviously done anyways.
It's gonna be done, yes.
Let's, we put a walking path around the maintenance garage.
Right, and then the fence breaks right next to it.
Yep.
Well, again, hopefully we can get that done before, before May. I mean, I'm still hopeful. I was hopeful for the end of the year, but I don't see that happening now.
Okay, so yeah, I feel like, I at least wanna feel like I move as fast as possible at this point because I, everybody else is, we gotta do something. So, okay, let's clean it up. That's it. Let's clean up what we can and then go from there.
Are we good? Motion to adjourn?[1797.91]